Josh, Bremer, and Matthew. We appreciate the opportunity to be a part of Democratic Government, Government in Action. Also, part of this meeting is the Salina League of Woman Voters, if you guys would like to stand. And the Manhattan Riley County League of Woman Voters. Now, I will be turning this over to Dr. Sarah Fisher.
Isn't that fun? Isn't that fun? Oh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Austin. All right. So, everybody, my task tonight, it's my pleasure to be with you. I don't know. This is fun for me, isn't it? Um, my, my task this evening is to be moderator, so I'm going to be asking the questions, and I'm going to keep us on task. Uh, you're probably wondering, like, what's this lady doing from out of town, coming to do our mod, our, our candidate forum here? That's a little weird, right? Uh, well, I actually came, I actually did one of these a couple of years ago, but this year we were invited back, uh, by the library, and it just conveniently works out. I live in Manhattan and I work in Salina, and I happen to be working with the student government and you, and with my colleague Brenda. She's over there. So, it just worked out really nicely to bring the groups together. Uh, we're also kind of trying to lobby at the state level for a, uh, for a sort of a, a league in the Flint Hills. So, we're, pretend we're the League of the Flint Hills. All right. Um, as you know, or I hope you know, the League's mission is to educate voters on the voting processes and issues of the day. We are a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose candidates, but we do take research positions on social issues. Did any of my League friends bring some materials to share? Oh, fiddlesticks. We forgot our homework. Okay, but we got some. Okay. Uh, candidate forums are a fundamental part of what we do, and we strive to be clearly structured. Uh, forums like this all over the state are structured in very much the same way, fair, and respond to the voters. So, uh, to that end, let me explain a little bit how, what I mean by structured. Uh, as you may have noticed, when the candidates came in, they drew a rummy cube tile. Uh, that's how they got their placement, uh, based on when they arrived and which cu, which tile they drew. Um, and they will be asked to, uh, their question responses will be two minutes. We have timekeepers right here to keep you on task. Uh, my timekeepers have a yellow card when you start. Want to demonstrate a yellow card? Uh, yups. Yeah, a green, a green card. And then, when do you go show your yellow card? At a minute?
One second.
At, at what? Okay. And then you show the red card at stop, right? Thank you, students. Okay. Uh, you guys can figure it out. We'll figure it out. All right. All right. The sequence of questioning is going to go, uh, we're going to start here first with Bruce, and then the second question, or this, uh, we'll start then with Rebecca, and the next one we'll start with Alan, so that it's a similar sequence, but different people get a start. Uh, but at the same time, I've also, we, I have some curated questions that have come from my League friends. Have, uh, we've done some research on your pol, on Abilene politics, but the candidate, the, uh, the vis, my goodness gracious, the audience has been given index cards, hopefully, when you walked in. And so, we invite audience participation in this, uh, process. If, as the forum goes along, you have a question, please write it down on that. And, um, Bremer, here's stu, my student Bremer, he will come around and collect those questions, and then pass them to some people up here at the front to curate them for clarity and redundancy. Uh, keep, caution, though, we only got time for five questions, so let's get some good ones in. Um, a word about decorum before I get started. I would like to ask the audience members, please, to withhold outward expression of approval or disapproval. This is not a public hearing. Uh, it's not a debate. This is a forum. We are not, the intention is not to influence what our candidates respond. Um, it is to learn their positions. And then I'm going to ask the candidates to please refrain from personal attack and stick to the limits, right? Stick to your two-minute limit. And I think that's it. But before I get to the questions, I will give you an opportunity to make an opening comment, and then after the question, you'll get an opportunity to make a closing comment. I hope I made some sense, right? Okay, are we ready to get started then? My timekeepers, are you ready for your first two minutes? All right. Bruce, would you like to offer opening comment?
Starting the clock. Okay. Well, it's going to be a good evening, folks. I want to welcome you all here, and, uh, we all look forward to answering questions. We look forward to presenting ourselves, because Abilene is in a situation that, uh, I think we'd all agree is problematic for us. We have, uh, uh, drained our reserve funds down way too far, and we're, we're needing to work really, really hard to build those back now. And I'm not sure that any of you from out of town would have any awareness of that, but it's going to take a lot of diligence. Uh, we've got an interim city manager in place who showed us where we were in trouble at, and will be, three of us will be part of a group that hires a new city manager. So, we need to do our homework. We need to diligently search out answers and, uh, present ourselves, uh, with the ability to work together, uh, so that we can come up with good answers. I, I am, uh, retired, I'm a retired dentist, uh, from the, actually, I lived in Salina for 35 years. I grew up on a farm close to Linsburg, so I'm a, I'm an area kid. All these other guys are from here. So, that's interesting in itself, but I learned, uh, a lot of lessons over, uh, different times that have served me well. I learned how to serve the public really close up as a dentist, about right here, of which that becomes very uncomfortable, especially with something in my hand that they probably don't want me to use. So, anyway, we're glad that you guys are here. We're looking forward to a, a good, uh, rousing time of question and answers. Thank you so much.
Good evening. It's great to be here tonight. I'm pleased to be part of the process. I love these things. I might be a little bit different than, uh, my own. There. Now I'm on. So, I actually really enjoy these evenings. I enjoy going door-to-door and meeting people. Um, that probably comes from my training at Abilene High School as a debater and in college, um, and, and my experience with government. Uh, I have served before in elective government office. Uh, I've been a member and a president of my school board. Um, I have served in appointee of public office. I've served as director of communications for a city, and I was appointed, uh, as, in state government as director of the Economic Development Arm of New Jersey by New Jersey Governor Jim McGreevy. So, my career has also followed government. Um, I've served as, um, as a, my own business, as a public policy analyst, which nobody really knows what, quite what that means, and it kind of means whatever I want it to sometimes. But, uh, it's, I've worked as a lobbyist. I've worked to help draft legislation. I've worked to help various groups, civic groups, uh, get their message across to elected officials and to the public. So, communication has been a big part of my life, a big part of my professional background, and that's one of the major reasons I want to serve on city commission, um, to increase communication among the commission, among the commission and staff, and with the public. What I find is that when people are most frustrated about government, about taxes going up, about something happening, it's because they're just not sure why. And sometimes an explanation helps, sometimes it doesn't, but I think if people understand the process and if they understand why things are happening, then they're, they're able to understand that there might be a need for it and discuss things that to happen. Um, I love the process, and that's really why I'm running for city commission. Um, I think government is a great thing when it works well, and I hope I can contribute something and, uh, help the Abilene City Commission work well. Thanks.
Hello there. My name is Alan Byer. Uh, I've been a lifelong citizen here of Abilene. Uh, one thing, I am not very adept at speaking about myself, uh, and I'm learning now in politics that it is important to speak on your experiences in life. Um, I, I grew up here. Uh, I have a lot of really great memories of running these streets. You know, one of my favorite things was the safety and security that I felt in this community. Uh, my parents felt so safe to just allow me to just ride my bike around town, and getting to see kids ride around town is something that really sparks a true bit of joy inside of me. Uh, a lot of my memories are going to many activities around this town. Uh, all of the different optimist leagues, uh, all of the things that Ms. Jane Foltz put on. Uh, that was a, a lot of, a lot of fun, and I'd like to continue those sorts of things. Uh, I, I worked at the local NAPA here growing up, and, uh, you know, I went, I started officially when I was 13, and I was able to work my way up from, uh, mopping the floors, making deliveries. Uh, I ended up almost, I actually ended up managing the store. Uh, when my parents sold the business in 2019, I started working, uh, with the new company to be able to actually, uh, manage a series of seven stores inside of a 13-store group. I've, I've made a lot of leadership choices. Uh, I've been able to, uh, attend, uh, Leadership Dickinson County, uh, which was a lot of fun. I've always taken, taken every opportunity I could to actually, uh, learn a leadership role, and I really look forward to potentially serving you guys. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am John Kohlhoff. I'm actually, uh, like Bruce, I'm not originally from Abilene. Um, I grew up in a small town not far from here called Beloit, and, uh, I'm Abilene by choice. So, uh, just a little bit about me. I am a, uh, husband to Sue. Uh, Sue and I own a pharmacy and a couple of other ventures. I've got three children, Claire, Whitney, and Patrick. Uh, Claire is probably most notable as the girl who plays football this year. Uh, so she's a, she's a lively character, um, and, um, very fortunate to be their, their parent. I came to Abilene to work as a, as a pharmacist, and, um, that's where I met a lot of you for the first time. I was able to serve you and your family and, uh, take care of your health. Uh, I'm also a real estate broker and have done some real estate development work. Um, and I've got to work with some of you in the crowd on that as well, or some of your parents, um, for one of the Salina Tech gentlemen, I believe. Uh, so that's, uh, that's really fun. Um, I think really the reason I'm here, um, is to provide some accountability, uh, for anybody who's been paying attention for the last few years anyway, and certainly more acutely the last, uh, six or eight months. Um, I was the sole commissioner standing up against four people who were blindly following a failed city manager. Um, the same city manager who put us in the budget position that Bruce mentioned earlier. I will tell you, that's been really frustrating, and so, as you go to the ballot box, I hope that you'll look down the line here and vote for me and vote for two other people who are willing to put the interests of the city ahead of feelings and do the right thing for the city and for its citizens. I think, I think everybody understands why their taxes are going up when they go up, and it's because we're spending money on pet projects and, and little things that maybe aren't as important. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. No, I...
Hi, everybody. I am Cy Taylor. I've been an Abilene resident for over 40 years now. Um, I met my wife here, um, over 20 years ago, Andrea. I've got three boys, um, two in middle school right now, Kane and Creighton, and I got one, uh, who is a senior and is graduating. So, we've got, uh, a lot of what I call lasts happening this year. Um, we just got our first college acceptance letters in the mail this year. So, there's a lot of lasts for our boys as they're transitioning onto new things. Um, part of those 40 years, uh, my folks, what brought us to town was my parents bought the bowling alley. Uh, I worked in the bowling alley as an eighth grader, as a 13-year-old, um, working with the community. Um, hundreds of people, uh, visited us throughout the week, and we made friends and lifelong friends and, and deep connections with, uh, the community of Abilene. Um, right now, I work for a, uh, public, uh, utility telecom company. Um, I'm a se, senior program manager for the engineering and, and construction for over 45 communities across the state of Kansas. Um, I've been heavily involved with, uh, baseball and, uh, football clubs in town and coached several of those teams over the last, um, oh, probably eight to 12, eight to 10 years now. Uh, my wife and I are both very active in the community, um, serving on various boards and committees on, and committees. Um, I'm running because Abilene's given me and my family so much. Uh, it's my turn to give back and do what I can do to, um, help make Abilene a town that's not only surviving but thriving. Uh, we want to, and I want to be a leadership and, uh, that, a leader that listens and is transparent.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Lidle. I am a wife slash widow, a mom of three wonderful kids, and a grandma to six beautiful grandkids. I am a lifelong resident of Abilene. Abilene is and always will be my home. Our community is very special to me. I have seen Abilene at its finest, and I have witnessed Abilene during many struggles. My goal as a commissioner would be to help our city move forward and to thrive again. I want to be a part to, of making this happen. I know that this is a challenge. I know that this is something I alone am not going to be able to do. This is going to take all of us, not just the ones that are elected to the commission next month, but all of us, our entire community, working together. I want to see more businesses coming to Abilene. I want us to attract more families. Abilene is a great place to raise your family. We need to encourage and welcome new families to our, our city and let them, have them make Abilene their home. I have had many conversations with people. I've listened, and I will continue to listen, to their concerns that they've shared with me. The budget, rising taxes, the streets, and the flooding issues are at the top of their lists. I am a listener, a problem solver, and I am prepared to do my own research as the issues arise, and I would appreciate your vo, vote on November 4th. Thank you.
All right. So, I've got some questions, uh, which are going to kind of sound thematic, some, from some of your opening comments. We're actually going to start up here with, uh, Rebecca for the first question, and this one is about, uh, fiscal responsibility and transparency. Fiscal responsibility and transparency are critical to the successful operation of any city. What can be done to ensure transparency of financial reporting and accurate audits at the city budget, including grant funds? So, the question is about what can be done to ensure transparency of financial reporting?
I think the first step in ensuring transparency, uh, in finances is to find people to do the jobs in the city who understand the jobs and understand their responsibilities. Um, I think many of the city commission members were unaware that they were lacking information, and as, as several of you have referred to and alluded to, uh, when we found out about this fact that the budget reserves had been drained over a two- or three-year period, and no one was aware of it. I mean, that's pretty terrifying. I don't think anyone would allow that to happen in their personal finances, and I don't think it was a matter of overlooking information. I think the right information was simply not provided to the city commissioners. So, that's the first step, is to hire a city manager who believes in communication and who can provide the information that's required. But it also requires, on our part, to ask questions, and I commend John for asking the questions, um, but unfortunately, he didn't get any answers either. Uh, we've got to be asking questions constantly and be aware of the information that we need. I've been to, uh, several advisory board meetings and watched as people struggle with finances, members of advisory boards that haven't had financial information that they need. Um, I've watched, I've, I've talked to citizens, and, you know, they're concerned about taxes, rising taxes. They don't understand why taxes grow up, and I think that's because the budget process is difficult for anybody to understand, but it shouldn't just be, let's introduce a budget, and it's going to be passed in a few weeks or not. A budget process should be a year-long process, and it should be a constant communication as we talk about our priorities as a city and where we want to put our money. So, I think transparency, integrity, accountability, those are hallmarks of a good city commission, and those are hallmarks of a good city commissioner. Uh, my entire career has been devoted to, to communication, and I certainly hope to continue that as a city commissioner.
Here you go. Yep, you go next.
Would you be willing to reiterate the question?
Sure. Uh-huh. Yeah, the question's about financial responsibility and transparency. Uh, what can be done to ensure transparency of financial reporting and accurate audits of city budgets, including grant funds? What can be done?
Upon my time of watching the city commission meetings and attending them, uh, one of the things that stands out in my mind the most is this, this budget is one of the first ones that I've truly paid attention to. And the way that they constructed it, and the way that they tore it apart, and the way that their, the town made suggestions, and the commissioners listened to them, uh, they were able to modify the budget to be able to conform to the funds that they had. And I think that that's a very powerful thing, and I think that that is a necessary tool that we need to utilize every year. Uh, more than anything, we need to identify the services that are the most important for us, and I think that the way that they were able to structure it this year shows a lot of, a lot of really great things that we can do inside this town. Uh, the way that they were able to not cut some of the things that make Abilene unique. Uh, I think that those kinds of prolonged discussions are things that need to happen more often. You can, you can get a lot more information put into something if you're willing to, you know, stretch out those more important, uh, critical decisions. Giving the information in ways or conveying the information to people is the most important thing that you can do. Uh, you know, working in retail or working anywhere else, the last thing you want to do is change the numbers at the very end. You always want to present the numbers first and get as close as you possibly can. And then, thank you.
Thank you. I need to, um, really commend interim city manager Quinde. Um, he's been really, um, willing to kind of dig into the technology that we have available to us. I think kind of my simple answer to a, a pretty complex question is just to put it all online. There's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be able to see the city's budget, see where the money's being spent, every single line item in real time. And I think our, I, I believe, I'm hopeful that the technology that we've, uh, just acquired will allow us to do that. So, I think everybody on either side of this, um, days should be able to see where, where the money's going.
John kind of stole my thunder. That was the direction I was going to go. Um, I was going to say, uh, getting a good quality city manager that, uh, communicates well, um, and can, uh, also manage and watch the budget in real time and communicate, uh, needs if something changes, if, uh, capital project needs brought in or weaken, um, you know, unexpectedly, or, uh, you know, I think a lot of the past issues that we've had are inflationary. Cost of services are going up in the mid, middle of a budget cycle. So, if we have good, real-time information that we can relay to the public, it can be an open dialogue with the public, and the public can be informed on the decisions that need made. And if any kind of, uh, amendment needs made, we can make it in real time as opposed to pushing it down the road, um, to the next budget cycle.
I too.
I too want to commend John Quinde. He hit the ground running. He has just done an amazing job so far, and it's going to be hard letting him go. First and foremost, we're going to have to find a new city manager. I only hope that we can find one with the knowledge and the mindset and the caring heart that John has and that he's brought to it, and I'm glad, I hope that he can be here for a little bit to hopefully train our new city manager, uh, with some of his ideas as well. Um, we have to ask questions. We have to listen to people. We have got to monitor our spending. But at the same time, staying revenue-neutral year after year after year is not going to help us. We have to be able to raise according to what the inflation is raising. You and I both know that our homes, our budgets at our houses are not staying the same. We all get raises at our jobs. Everything is going up, and we cannot expect the city to continue to, uh, do business on the same money year after year after year. If we continue to just raise the, the mill levy very slightly each year instead of drastically, it'll be a lot easier on everybody to handle and a lot easier on everybody's pocketbooks. I don't like taxes either, but I don't like inflation, and I like my raises at my job. Uh, without those, I wouldn't be able to make ends meet. The city's not going to be able to make ends meet without that either. So, we have to work together. Again, it's going to take all of us. Thank you.
Okay, before I read my second question, just a reminder to the audience, do you have note cards? Oh, oh, my gosh.
She already forgot me.
I made that mistake early.
Not a problem. Um, really, we've started into a discussion that's real, quite interesting to me. Actually, um, I spent about 45 minutes talking to Mr. Quinde today, just asking him the questions that we're talking about, and he's very straightforward. He, uh, he enjoys being engaged. I sent him a list of questions the other day. He, he probably took an hour and a half to write down in great detail uh, how he viewed everything that, that I was asking him. I appreciated that a lot. I think we're all seeing that. It's not anything unusual for him to do. In fact, we've, we've run the study in real time of seeing what happens if we aren't getting good information, and then we're making choices and not doing our, our own homework, our own research. John has done, uh, as much research as I've seen anybody do, and, um, he's kind of putting himself in a unique position, let's say, sometimes in doing that. But I believe that, that we have to take the time, and I'm just going to say, I'm retired, so I've got the time to meet with all of these people during the day. Uh, and that doesn't necessarily preclude anybody else from getting the information they, they need to make choices, but we've got to do our own research as commissioners to make the choices, uh, that need to be made to protect our city. This is our city. When taxes go up, it's not just, it's not just somebody else's money. It's my money too. And that's how I look at, uh, doing what we need to do for our entire population.
Okay, now, now everybody's had a chance to answer, right? I do apologize about that. So, before I ask the second question, let me remind the audience that you've been given an index card, and if you have a question that you'd like to bring forward to wave it, and Bremer will, will collect it. Okay, so the question, the second question is actually about the police department. Uh, public safety, of course, is of utmost importance to all communities. What are your thoughts? And Alan, you'll begin this question this time. What are your thoughts on fully staffing the police department and filling the open positions? What kind of priority should this be, and how should it be done? So, what are your thoughts on, uh, fully staffing? What, how important should it be, and how should it be done?
Thank you. The other day, at the, the city commission, uh, Chief Wilkins, uh, gave a nice speech, and it kind of put a lot of things into perspective for me. I, I don't even consider some of the threats that the police officers think are, are around us. You know, with, as, as a parent of a teenage, a couple of teenagers, actually, uh, I see impending danger all around them, uh, and they're, it's coming at them at such a high rate of speed comparatively speaking to when we were raised. Uh, as far as staffing, I think that that's a very important thing, uh, 100%. You know, the, the streets aren't going to keep themselves clean. At the end of the day, we have to give our police department the resources that they need to perform the jobs that they feel are necessary. You know, I'm, I'm not an expert when it comes to law and order, my, self-admittedly, uh, but I can trust the people that are in the positions of power. And if they are giving advice, that's important advice to listen to. Uh, if they think at the end, if, if they think that they need more staff, it definitely deserves to be looked into. Because ultimately, if you burn out the people that are in the positions, you will end up losing the people that you have paid to train. Uh, anybody that has been in business knows for a fact that it takes a considerable amount of money to be, to train somebody up to... to train somebody up to the position that they are. And the last thing you want to do is run somebody off for not giving them the resources that they need to perform their job.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I do think it's important to have police. I think one of the things that Mr. Quinde freely admitted is that there's never been a study to determine what level of police staffing is needed in the city. And actually, that goes for most other departments in the city as well. And so I'm all for having a fully staffed police department. But I think we need to understand what that means and how that reflects the priorities of our city. I think, you know, technology is changing things. I think there's an opportunity specifically within policing to share resources with, with the county, potentially other neighboring communities. For example, one, one new tool that you may not be aware of is the flock cameras that are installed all over the city. These are taking down your license plates and everything as you drive by. And under the leadership of our previous city manager, those were installed without any public oversight. There was never one single meeting about that. And it came along with a thousand dollar a month subscription fee. So I think that, that's, that's not to say that they're bad. In fact, they're incredibly efficient. I know that there was a robbery or something up at the hotel and they found them fifteen minutes later. So I think there's good technology there and, and it's good to keep bad people in check. But I think that we also need to use that technology to modernize what we're doing with policing. I don't, I think with computer, computing power and AI, I think, you know, there's probably not a need for police officers to be going through cell phones to find data. I think we can probably push a button once you plug your iPhone into the computer and they can figure that out. So I think obviously policing is important. We want to have a safe community. Abilene, we're, we're fortunate that Abilene is such a safe community. I trust it so much that I'll occasionally leave town for the weekend and leave my front door not just unlocked but open. So, so I certainly appreciate that. But I do think that it is important to have that discussion and to have that discussion publicly by the governing body. So, thank you.
I definitely think that there's probably efficiencies to be found in every, every department across the board. There's still a lot of work to be done. I'm gonna refer back to the same meeting that Alan brought up where Chief Wilkins gave his, his, his spiel on, on staffing and why it was important. You know, Chief Wilkins is a newly hired police chief and he's been on the Abilene Police Department for a lot of years and I respect greatly his, his thoughts on the matter, which are online threats and the threats that we face nowadays and the different, you know, the amount of workload that the police officers have nowadays based on technology that John mentioned. But the phone's in their hand and all the threats and the interactions with kids and all that stuff. It just adds a lot more to their workload. And safety and security to our citizens is, is highly important. I think there's two open officer positions right now and I believe they should be filled for the fact that patrols need to be made. The last thing I want to know is that I'm gonna have a slow response because we don't have the staffing needed to make that three o'clock call to, you know, my grandma's house in time of need. So my opinion is the police department, public safety and fire departments need to operate at full staff and based on the experience levels of the police chief and the fire chief, I tend to agree with their recommendations on staffing.
Okay, I definitely support a fully staffed police department. We have a major highway that goes through Abilene. We have another one, I mean, we have two highways that tee right at, at the edge of Abilene. We get a lot, a lot of undesirables coming through, passing through. I want to know that if something happens in this town, God forbid, we would have an active shooter situation at one of our schools, at our hospital, at a church, in our grocery store. I want to know that we're going to have a fully staffed police department to come up and take care of that. I don't want to worry about our police officers being tired because they're overworked and understaffed. The world we live in today is very scary. I do not leave my door open. I used to walk this town. I used to walk all over this town. From eight years old, I was walking down to Old Abilene Town and going to work with my mom in the Alamo Saloon. I would not allow my grandkids to do that today. Just because, as they say, I'm a worrier. But I want to know, and my brother is the sheriff of Dickinson County, so I see a lot of the stuff that goes on or hear about a lot of the stuff that goes on that a lot of people probably don't even know happens. Definitely I am for a fully staffed police department. Thank you.
Because we have overspent our city budget for, or the budget was just too high because we've overspent and now we're paying a price for it. We're, we're in a very unique situation. I think that the answer to it is part of it has been discussed already, but what we need to look at, what we have to look at is what really are essential city services? What do those boil down to? And then put a dividing line and say, okay, we can afford, we are going to choose to fully staff those, but we're going to have to start cutting something else. And that's where the pain comes in. What, what are city essential city services? Can I call the director of the city band and expect him to come stop the intruder at my house? No, that's a police decision. You have to have a policeman to do that. And I'm not saying anything negative. It's just that you have to decide what you're going to spend your money on. And that's a tough choice. The transparency issue of spending, in this case, the police department, is just having the information out there and with computers, I could pull this thing up and I can tell you so much information so fast. It's like John said, this is not, that's not difficult, but it does take time. It takes consistency. It takes knowledge. It takes training. There's just a lot of stuff that the police department is kind of, they're, they're unique. They really are unique. So I appreciate that, the question actually. And I enjoy working with our fellow commissioners to find the answer. Thank you.
So I think one thing we can all agree on as we talk about this issue is that that, that the time to discuss whether or not you need a fully staffed police department is not at the same meeting where you're voting on the budget. Okay, this requires some strategic planning. And unfortunately, this year, the commission was forced into a position where they had to make some tough choices without the knowledge and the information that they really needed. So they didn't have a lot of room to, to make well-informed choices. We can't find ourselves in that position again next year. And I would say that obviously, public safety is a priority. It's thirty-nine percent of our budget. So that's for police and fire. So clearly, that's important. But we've really, there's two points I would like to make. The first is that we are not unique in Abilene as a small Kansas town facing draining resources. Some would say perhaps like a dying public, but you know, we, we're, we're kind of struggling. We, we are struggling right now. There are lots of Kansas towns in this position. We don't have to come up with the answers alone. We should be working through the Kansas League of Municipalities, through networking with other commissions, looking to see, do, do shared services work? How have other municipalities done shared services? What solutions have they come up with? We don't have to invent the wheel here. We'll share it if we do, but we should be able to work with other municipalities and, and get information. And I'm going to differ a little bit with you here, Bruce. I don't think it's a question of saying, well, we've got, we've got this pie and we're going to cut it into pieces. And the big piece over here is police and fire salaries. So if they get more, we're going to have to get smaller pieces over here. I don't think budgeting has to be that way. I don't think it's a zero sum proposition. Right? If, if my kids are fighting over a piece of pie and, and it's like, that's the last one. I'm like, you know what? Go bake another pie. Nothing's stopping you from doing that. If you've got a budget that just doesn't have the resources you need, you've got to get creative about where to find the, the sources, the money that you need. You can't get blood out of a turnip, as my mother used to say. We've got to grow our tax base and find new sources of funding for our city.
Okay, we're going to kind of continue in the same, along the same themes of priority and money. And let me make sure I get this right because I do get this confused. I believe, John, you're going to start with you on this question. Thank you, audience, for questions. Keep them coming. This question is again about priorities and funding. What three projects or city departments should have priority funding? And what do you think the best source of funding is for these priority projects? So what are the three priority projects and what is the source of revenue for them?
Thank you for the question. I guess I, I don't think in a city you can pick three. Obviously, we've talked about police and fire and those are important. Water is another thing that we've discussed kind of at length. I know that is, that's absolutely vital. If we don't have water, our, our community will, will dry up in, in months, not years. So I don't think that we can have the luxury of picking three and then working our way down. But I think on the source of revenue, I think that's really where we have the opportunity to be creative. Mr. Quinde and Brad Anderson have been working on some potential funding for some of our water treatment, some of our sewage treatment. I think that there's, there's a lot of community development block grants available through the Department of Commerce. So I think from a, from a funding source, I think that there's a lot of different funding sources for all the departments. The top three, of course, whichever those are for each of you, but also many of the other departments throughout the city. So I think just really being aggressive on finding those, those grants and funding sources. Abilene is, I, I don't know if you know, but Abilene is the only city in Kansas that raised a president. And I think that it gets a lot of respect throughout the state and our legislature. And we've been really, really fortunate to get those, get those grants when we ask for them. I think we just need to be more aggressive about asking for those. I think everybody wants to see Abilene succeed.
Yes, finding new sources for revenue, grant exploration, working with, working with the state, working with federal money, the, all the departments are important, just like they said. It's, I mean, you got public safety. We've got storm sewer issues that we need to address. We've got street issues that we've always got to work on, that we've got a special tax for that we need to see through. So all these issues, there's no one more important than the other. Like I said, there's funding out there. We just need to be aggressive and make sure that we're always looking for the opportunities. Hire a city manager that's qualified, who's been through this type of storm before and just do our best to, to explore all our options.
Yeah, I think we're all pretty much on the same page on this. Our, our street drainage problems definitely need to be looked at. They need to be prioritized. The city staff needs to be encouraged to search for and secure grants to help with that. The street repair, we, they've been doing an excellent job on street repairs. There's a lot of the streets here in Abilene that have gotten, gotten a facelift and they're so much nicer to drive on right now, but we still have a lot more work to do on streets. Again, it has to be prioritized in the, in the need. And then the water definitely is a big issue. We cannot survive without water, so we have to make sure that our facilities are, are capable of, of producing and, and that we are charging the correct amount to the, to the users for the water. I think all of us are pretty much on the same page on all of that. Thank you.
Ready? It's interesting that you talked about three projects because we've, we've already picked three. Our city's obligated itself. We've got ten million dollars sitting in the bank to start using, which we are obligated to use because we've already voted for it. And they are the Sea Clip Project that's called Connecting Link. It's the highway that comes through town. We call it Buckeye. It's Highway fifteen as it comes in. That's, that's one project that, that is in process or will be shortly. We've already done one section of it and there's going to be two more that are going to be done or they're in process. The industrial park, which is in the northwest part of the city, just off of the interstate, Russell Stover's Loves, that, that area in there, that's another project that we've already got in process and it's been voted to be, the infrastructure's been voted to be approved to put in. The last one is the recreation complex and that one has been approved as well. I mean, I love, I, I, we've got granddaughters that play a lot of ball in a lot of different cities and it's a really, really big deal. Whether we can afford it or not, I'm not so sure about that. I, I want to take a really close look at that. I've got a lot of questions. A lot more questions than answers, but I appreciate everybody's input on it. Thank you.
So a couple of things, certainly we can agree on that we need to look for grants. That's about advocacy. That's about reaching out to all legislatures, state, federal legislatures to find additional sources of funding. We've got to do some cost cutting, cost savings. And I think John Quinde has done a great job of trying to find cost sharing, job sharings where we can find efficiencies in our government. I think for me, one of the priorities is economic development. And when we think about economic development, we think about, well, let's get new businesses to come in. We're building this big industrial park, so let's get businesses in. We'll be doing great. But economic development is really, it's a two-part, at least two-part process, right? You've got to get businesses to come in, but before you can attract businesses, you have to be sure that you can supply businesses with what they need. Businesses need employees. Employees need houses. They need affordable housing. Employees need affordable childcare. We've got to ask ourselves if we're prepared for this economic development, if we can attract the kind of companies that we need. I think the budget situation we find ourselves in is certainly unfortunate and that took a lot of people by surprise. But if you're watching the news at all, you're finding that, and if you're thinking about the future, this may just the beginning, be the beginning of some really tough times ahead for Kansas. And particularly for Dickinson County, where so much of our income is, is agricultural. And you're looking at farmers already hurting, the soybean farmers, the sorghum farmers, the cattle prices. It's possible that we could be in some long range economic distress. So I think that comes back to the importance of strategic planning. Again, you can't just, we had to make decisions. I think the commission had to make decisions this year because they didn't have the adequate information, but we can't be in that situation again. So strategic planning with all of our projects and they need to be looked at as a whole. You can't pick one, two or three because all of these things are necessary. But with the proper planning and the proper vision, we can come up with the long range plan that will help us make our priorities clear and reach those priorities.
All right, my priorities, I would have to probably say safety, number one. I think that that's probably on everybody else's number one list too. Next is water management and I, I think that's kind of a, a double because you have the water mitigation and you have the source of water. As far as where funding comes from, you can generate it from all sorts of different places. But I think that more, the most reliable source that we have is our tourism. We have a hundred thousand people that come through our town. Working with, inside my family's business, I know exactly how much revenue the events that this town puts on brings in. It, it's an amazing thing. If we're giving our businesses the opportunity to generate sales tax dollars from people outside of our community, that can fund all sorts of things. And I think that that is something that needs to be capitalized on more. At the end of the day, we need to try to come up with opportunities as well as activities inside of our community. There's a lot of things that we can do. Even our antique mall down here throws activities for us to get on board with to, to provoke people traveling to our town. You know, you go around and you talk to several different people in, in different communities like Salina, Manhattan. Everybody has fond memories of coming to Abilene and that's a, it's a great thing to know that people from larger communities have been here and have left a, it's left a footprint in their mind. People used to travel here just for Kuntz's Express, you, you know, and when, when they're in town for that destination, they, they stop through, they, they go through Eisenhower Center, you know, as well as other businesses. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Okay, so we're gonna move on. We're gonna. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, so we're gonna move on, we're gonna, oh, yes. Okay, this question, we're gonna begin with Si. And we're going, this one is about the city managers. We've heard this, uh, before, we've heard this theme. Um, it's a three-parter, so hang on. All right, so city manager, what attributes would you like to see in the new city manager? What do you think the ideal relationship should be between the commission and the city manager? And what would you personally contribute to finding the best candidate? So what are the ideal, uh, attributes? What's the relationship? And what are you going to do about picking the best one?
So, say that again, attributes?
Relationship?
Relationship.
And how are you gonna pick the best one?
Okay, attributes you would need to hire a new city manager would be, you would want somebody with experience first and foremost. The situation that we're in has been a lot smoother with, um, city manager Quinde at, at the helm. He's been doing a fantastic job of righting the ship. And we need to find somebody that is, has got good experience and a good track record of turnarounds. Um, we also need to find a city manager that is a good communicator, who has a good track record of working with communities and bringing them, uh, back in line and working on budgets, and all the experience necessary. They need to be able to, uh, work well with the commissioners. They need to have regular meetings, have regular, have regular communication via technology, websites. Um, and, uh, be able to have a back and forth with commissioners and work and, and listen to the community like, uh, Mr. Quinde does. He does a fantastic job of every meeting, he will say, if anybody in the community wants to come talk to me, my door's open. We need to have an open-door policy with the city manager. That has been very effective. Um, and that's how I'd pick my city manager. I would go through and I would look at past experience, past history. What's he done in other communities to, uh, be a benefit to them and to help right the ship? And, uh, how has he worked with, or she, how have they worked with, um, city commissioners in the past? Based on good references with other towns and other communities. Um, that's how I'd pick a ci- city manager.
I think if we could just clone John Quinde, we'd all be pretty happy. Um, he, he has made a huge mark in Abilene, I think. Uh, we need to look at their experience, we need to look at their resume. We need to do our research. And like Si said, we need to find out what he's been involved in and how he handled different, uh, aspects of previous city manager jobs. Uh, and communication has got to be number one, not only with the commission, but with the city, with the, with the community, with the citizens. Um, it's not gonna be an easy task, I don't think. And hopefully, we get some good candidates that we are able to, uh, screen. So, that's all.
It's me, isn't it? Uh, when I went to college, uh, I was a student body president in, uh, at McPherson College. And in, during that year, we, we hired, got to hire a new president of the college. And this was at the time when there were sit-ins, there was a little crazy people, you know, big bell-bottom pants and all the furry hair and all that crazy stuff. I, I was part of that thing. Well, I wasn't, but you know, it's like... But anyway, that was a super learning experience to learn how to discern and, and meet with a group of people. Uh, tr- board of trustees, you know, these are people that have a lot of money, and they have a lot of influence, and they're all meeting together, talking. And I, I thought that they hated each other. No, they were just saying, speaking their mind, they, they knew what they needed. They knew what was important, and then they'd go out and eat lunch together. And I thought, wow, that's really cool. So, uh, we don't have to yell and, you know, at each other's faces and, you know, send nasty Instagram things and all of that stuff. Um, I think the attributes are pretty clear. I think we've seen a good example, and I don't have a problem with any of those. I, I think that's great. The thing that I'm used to doing, that I would do, uh, just pretty much naturally, I was on the board of directors for a couple of other businesses. And we just, uh, made up a list of questions. We learned how to ask, uh, all the reference questions, all the, and, and talk to people, uh, that knew them. That is a big key, is asking people that know them. You call somebody where they live and you ask them what's going on, did they like them or not? But, um, I, I enjoy the process. It's, in fact, it's easy for me, so thank you for the question.
Yeah, well, I would say, too, if we could just quote, clone John Quinde, we'd be in great shape. Um, he is one of the most accessible people I've ever met, as well as being knowledgeable. And, and Bruce, uh, we must have given him a lot to think about today. I started my day at eight o'clock, meeting with him in the offices this morning. So, uh, he's willing to meet with everyone, and, and he's just, he's been terrific. And it's, it's been, um, so instructive, I think, for city staff and for the commissioners to see what a really excellent city manager looks like. Um, I think the process of hiring a city manager really begins with us. And I go back to my training on the school board with the School Boards Association as a, a school board member. Um, it's up to a school board, just as it's up to a city commission, to set policy. We have to know what our priorities are. We have to know what we want in the city manager. And then it's up to us to hire that city manager, who will then interpret our policy and carry our decisions out. Um, someone asked me the other day, well, isn't it the city commission's job to hire city staff? I said, oh, no, absolutely not, not ever, chain of command. You hire the city manager, the city manager makes the hiring decisions. If you're not comfortable with those hiring decisions, then it's time to find a new city manager. But it is not the job of the commission to, to do a city manager's job. We've got to find someone who, uh, will be up to the job. Um, and I think the qualities we talked about are pretty obvious, transparency. Knowledge is so important. Um, there, there are places to learn, and I hope our new city manager will always be learning, but we don't want them to come in below the curve. They've got to come in with a, a significant amount of knowledge and experience. Um, we're, I know in the process of hiring a search firm and looking for someone, and that will be important as well, to let the search firm, um, winnow through candidates, and hopefully, we will have a lot of candidates. Um, so that will be, um, be something that we really wanna look for. In terms of, um, how do you pick the best one? Um, I learned in hiring superintendents and in hiring consultants in my business, uh, and in hiring consultants with nonprofit boards. Um, you, you kind of learn the process, as Bruce said, so I look forward to it, too.
Thank you. Okay, Debbie, you get a, you get a, oh, I told you, I make this mistake.
Picking on the ball?
Go for it.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer it backwards. One thing that I can contribute, uh, I think I can call back upon all of my different hiring that I've done in my life. I've hired for leadership roles inside of, uh, NAPA. I've got to hire some of my own sales team in my current role. Uh, I've hired and fired several people in my life, and I believe that I have a, a great sense of character. And I think that that goes a long ways. Uh, as far as a relationship with the commission, I think that they need to be able to feel comfortable presenting the information that they have in their hand to you. Uh, if you're, if you're trying to crucify them, or if you're giving them too much praise, uh, sometimes that can go one way or another. Uh, I think consistency is the most important thing when you have people under you because they have to be willing to approach you. As far as attributes that I would look for, um, I'd look for somebody that's kind. I'd look for somebody that's smart. I'd look for somebody that, uh, had our town's interests in mind. I would hire somebody that can, that can count a lot higher than me. Uh, there's a, I could, I could go on and on, you know? There's, and at the end of the day, it's not me that's making the decision. It is a council, or, or excuse me, a commission that's working together as one body to create a decision for everybody that's sitting out in this crowd, minus the people that are outside of it. But thank you for being here. Um, and I think that I can work inside of a team very well and create a good decision-making process for us all.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna kinda jump around a little bit, too. I think, um, as far as how I can personally contribute, um, I, I'm currently sitting on the city commission, and it was important to me that the process did include not just the current city commission, but since we're replacing a majority, uh, or potentially a, a majority this year, I wanted to make sure that the incoming commission had a role in that as well. Um, with that, I have thought extensively about what I wanted, uh, in a new city manager. Um, the, and I've got a list of six here, so professional. So the basic knowledge, how to run the city, um, responsive to the commission, to staff, and to the public, um, efficient and accountable. So the city right now is going through multiple, very large projects. I mean, somebody who can handle the stress of that. It's, it's not going to be a, a simple task, um, for the, the many things that we have going on. Um, competent obviously goes along with professional, and I think the last one, and certainly not the least, um, is somebody who's honest, somebody that, that we can trust, um, when we go to them with an issue or when the, a member of the public goes, uh, to them. From an ideal relationship, um, whether we like it or not, we're their boss. Um, and I think hopefully that relationship is collaborative. Um, I think we all hopefully should share the same goals for our city. Um, and when we don't, um, we can, we can respectfully disagree. Um, but I think that I would like to have a new city manager that sees all the goals that we're, we're trying to accomplish within the city and, uh, is willing to work side by side to get those accomplished. Uh, as far as personally, uh, one more thing on personal contributions. Um, I think, hopefully you can respect this. I think I've done a lot of the hard work for you already because I think that anybody who comes here is going to be, is going to meet most of those things because I don't think they're even going to apply if they know what, what they might be up against. If they don't, if they walk into that seat and don't know what they're doing, it's gonna be a rough day. Uh, that's, that's the accountability that I'm gonna, that I'm committed to bringing to this commission.
All right, well, see, I just am so excited to get to the next question. That's, uh, keep stopping the gun. Um, okay, so the next question, uh, is about the sports complex, and I believe we're gonna start with you. Is that right, guys? Do we start with her?
Yep.
All right, just make it, no, I'm teasing, I knew they were starting with you. Uh, this one's about the sports complex. Uh, so, and it's a three-parter, again. What are your thoughts about the recently approved sports complex? What challenges do you see to its success? And what role the, will or should the commission play in its success? So what are your thoughts about its approval? What challenges do you imagine? And what role do you think the city commission should play in that success?
Well, I, for one, voted for the sports complex. I played ball on the ones that are there now, and I'm not a spring chicken. My kids all played ball on the ones that are there now. They needed upgraded. It was very embarrassing to, or eye-opening, I don't know the word, to go to other towns for tournaments and see how great their sports complexes are. They actually have doors on their bathrooms and not shower curtains. The, the fields, um, they can still play in the rain. The fences don't have big holes in them where the balls are gonna go through, and the kids have to, you have to call a timeout because, or a, take, only take one base. I don't know what the, what the law is. Ty would, Si would be able to tell us that. Um, I think it's a great thing. I voted for it. I'm happy that, that we're finally getting that done. I think it's gonna be a great thing for Abilene. I think we're gonna bring a lot of, uh, ball tournaments to town, which is gonna bring revenue. We're gonna have our motels full, we're gonna have gas stations, uh, getting money, our restaurants getting money, um, our antique stores. You know, we're, we're gonna benefit from having a nice sports complex. We will have more tournaments, I think, than we've ever had before because we have the facilities to run them. The challenges is going to be upkeep. We have to make sure that the, that the maintenance is done on them. Uh, that would go through our city recreation department. I know they do a great job. They are, they do stay busy. Uh, we just have to make sure that that, uh, gets taken care of like it's supposed to. And as far as the commission's, oh, I'm out of time.
So we're here to you, Bruce.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna give you both sides of this thing. We've got granddaughters that are all athletic, and they play in Nebraska, and they can, they're 45 minutes from Lincoln. So they, they travel to Lincoln on a regular basis and, and play. They, they, they travel huge distances cuz they're a little, a little city. They'll go north and west and east, even into Iowa sometimes. Anyway, we, we see what it takes for them to do it, and they don't have the money. They don't have the money. But I'll guarantee ya, parents will find the money to get their kids to go to these things. Uh, so it, the demand is, is not in question, and it's a, it's a huge, high-level compet- competition between cities to get tournaments to come. Uh, it, it's amazing to me. I mean, Salina, for instance, they, um, they put in, you know, they've got a lot of ball fields, and, and they initially, at least I was told this, if I'm wrong, you, you let me know. But I was told that they did not put in artificial turf initially in their ball fields. And the next year, they, they put artificial turf in because everybody else had it. And if it's raining, you better be able to accommodate the game because if you miss a tournament, the people that are in charge of those say, take them off the list. We don't need to go there anymore cuz somebody else will provide that. So it's, it's not, I mean, we call it a game, but it's big-time money and importance to, to make it happen. Now, whether I agree with making it happen, that's, that's a little bit questionable because you're talking a limited part of time, you're talking somewhat a limited number of kids, and, and whether that's fair to the other kids that don't play baseball and sports. Man, that, that's a discussion to have. Um, we're talking $4 million, 4 million bucks, and that's the initial thought about what it's gonna take to do it. I don't disagree that we shouldn't do something, but I don't know that, uh, that's the thing we need to be doing. Thank you.
Well, to be honest, I think the last time I probably set foot on one of the softball fields was, um, a few decades ago, when one summer I helped a friend coach a, a softball team, uh, at, at one of the fields. Uh, it's probably in not as great a shape now as it was then. Uh, so I think there's definitely a need for an improved, um, softball field, just for our kids, if for nothing else. I think the economic benefits that are gonna come from the visiting teams are gonna be terrific for Abilene. Um, I think that ship has sailed, Bruce, in terms of, you know, whether we proceed with it because it's a done deal, right? I think the challenges for us as a city commission now are that we're gonna have to provide careful oversight of the construction process, uh, make sure that our recreation department is, is eager and, and ready to, to market the facility. And I think it's, it's kind of like if we build it, they will come. You know, we hope that's what they will do. But I think it's gonna be a tremendous opportunity for Abilene, and I think that that's part of our economic development uh, in terms of, uh, just bringing people in to take advantage of the resources we have here, to bring money into our city. Uh, and also the other part of economic development that I talked about, to provide recreation opportunities for our kids, uh, to make Abilene an attractive, desirable place to live. You know, it's great to have people coming into town. We want their money, we want their business, we want them to enjoy our city. But at the end of the day, we're not making Abilene better for tourists. We're making Abilene better for those of us who live there, and that has to be our priority. And I think the ball fields will do that.
Um, my, my overall thoughts of the ball field, uh, I don't believe I voted for it. Um, I don't believe I did. But now that it's on, on our docket, I'm, I'm ready for the challenge. I think it'll be fun. Um, what's, what would be my role in it? Um, making sure that it is the best that it can be, honestly. Uh, calling upon resources. Um, you know, if you have lived here long enough, you know that there is some instances where we have, uh, some delusions of grandeur when it comes to some of our projects. And, uh, you know, we, we go in with the best of intentions, but then we can fall short when it comes to budgets. Uh, next thing you know, things get shorted, and sometimes there's a call to action there. And if you have a voice that your people trust to be able to call upon those resources, I think that's a very important thing. Uh, you know, Rebecca pointed out a, a very good point that I never even considered. Uh, do we have the staff to accommodate this? You know, there's gonna be a, a lot of new, a lot of new people that might be, potentially...
that might be potentially required to run this. I played on all the fields growing up. I'd love to play as an adult, responsibilities and all. But I kind of covered some of the challenges. You know, there could be a shortfall when it comes to budget or, you know, material costs potentially go up. There's, but that's everywhere. My overall thoughts about it, I think it can be a really great thing. And I think it can draw some people here. But overall, if you're not providing the opportunities for your kids to grow with something, they're going to grow out of it. And I think that we've already kind of seen that with a lot of our ball here. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, I would say vigorously in favor of recreational opportunities for our children. I think that's a really important quality of life issue for any community to have recreational opportunities, really across all ages, not just for kids. I think frankly, anytime you can get a kid away from their phone screen or the device, that's a huge win. So hopefully, hopefully we'll see more of that with what we have going on here. I will say, one of the challenges, we've already been through some of the challenges. I think unfortunately, the process to get to even where we are today was kind of in fits and starts and we're going back to square one and we don't even know what we're building. I don't, as a sitting city commissioner, I have no idea what we're building today. And part of that is because I'm not on that committee. There's a rec committee who I think is more in touch with that. But we had what we thought was going to be a final plan in front of us six months ago and now that plan's been entirely scrapped. So I mean, I would expect more of those challenges going forward. I certainly have concerns about cost. I think a couple other folks up here have spoken to it. I think we really need to focus on what we need for our community. And again, I would love to have all the tournaments in town. I think there's a huge opportunity for that. There's a gentleman in the back here who's been a part of that in another community where they've seen tens of millions of dollars come into their community because of recreation. And I think we have the opportunity to get a slice of that pie. But I think really where my heart is at is making sure that we're taking care of the kids, giving the kids opportunities, activities, memories of their youth in Abilene, but also recreational opportunities regardless of age. And that's really, I guess, what I would like to see. Maybe not part of this potential, this same sports complex project, maybe another one in the future. I think it's really important for us to have essentially ways to move, ways to stay healthy all throughout our lifecycle. And my time's up, I'm sorry.
I am all for the sports complex project. I voted for it. Just like Debbie said, 40 years ago, I can remember playing T-ball on the same exact fields. I've been president of the Abilene baseball club. We put on tournaments there on weekends. And just the playing surfaces alone, you'll walk away with a sinus infection after, after, and Austin's on his head, he's played in the same tournaments. He'll walk away with a sinus infection at the end of the day. And you darn sure don't want to send your grandma into the bathroom with the shower curtain. And that goes along with all the other problems out there, too. There were sewer problems, there were sprinkler problems, there are all kinds of problems. Fencing, a light pole would blow down about every other year. So there was massive improvements in capital money that needed to be put in it as it was. I would say for the challenges going forward, talk what Bruce and John said was the cost. The initial cost, I think they were thinking that they were get somewhere around the $8 million mark to build what they wanted to do and it came in at four. So we're going to have to work within the new bounds of getting a lot done with less than what we thought. So, and also not to forget the rec kids. The recreational kids who use this, playing soccer, playing flag football, who are out there playing Bronco baseball, Babe Ruth baseball. It's not all about the travel league kids or the tournament kids. You go out there on a Saturday or a Wednesday night and that place is full. And those are our kids. We need to give our kids a place to play where it's safe, where they have pride in. And it's brought up to speed, up to the 21st century. You know, Alan mentioned maintenance costs. I know, just off the top of my head, I can take a less mowing, less chalking, less work in the fields. So that'll kind of bounce out in the future, too.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce, I believe, right? Did I do it right? Okay, I believe you get to start, yeah. Yep, yep. Okay, so this question is a little bit of a shift from talking about ball fields and shower curtains. This really makes me want to go check out your ball fields. Okay, I'm digressing. Anyway, this question is about decorum in governance. And what are your thoughts about decorum in governance? What changes are needed to the existing policies to ensure that all participants, elected officials and the public demonstrate decorum in governance?
Actually, that's a very, that's a very easy, quick answer. I believe that all people have equal values. So regardless of who's speaking or listening, we should all respect each other's opinions, who they are, what they're speaking. There's no need to have anything other than a agreeable disagreement process. I just, I just don't have that issue anytime I'm working with anybody. Challenges in policy, what can you?
Changes in policy.
Changes in policy, okay.
Probably said challenges, but I meant changes.
I mean, to me, it's an issue of, if you treat people in the way that you want to be treated if your situations are reversed, there's your answer. I mean, it doesn't need to be complicated.
Got it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think with regard to the changes in policy, we had a question, I think, in the questionnaire for the paper possibly. But, you know, the city code that we have governs the way meetings are conducted. That's a state law, I believe. We actually don't go by Robert's Rules of Order. And I'm thinking that if we just inserted something simple into our city code, like let's go by Robert's Rules of Order, that's an easy way to govern a meeting if someone, the mayor, is having some challenges, perhaps keeping decorum in a meeting. I think you can disagree without being disagreeable, obviously. Some people are more comfortable with discussion that can be kind of heated than other people. I think, you know, we all get passionate about some things sometimes. And I think that some of the questions that John has asked, and John, not to single you out, John, but I think, you know, it's a good thing to ask questions. And I think if we're all on the same page and we understand that we're operating as a team, which I think is really important, then we can ask those questions. And if somebody gets a little heated at some point, hopefully there's an understanding that there's a relationship that carries you past that moment. We're all working for the same things. And that goes for staff as well as the commissioners. We want to establish those working relationships that are productive. And I think being part of the team and understanding what we're working for is the way you achieve decorum, if you will, in meetings.
I believe that decorum is a really important thing. We do a study where I work to determine the best way to work with the individuals that you have around you. They essentially assign you colors and then you work with each other specified to what color set they are. And I think that's a really cool thing because if you know if a person's a color red, they're going to give you the bare minimum information. You're going to turn around, well, you're going to smile at them, turn around and walk out. And if a person comes and asks me for information, they're going to get a pamphlet. And I think that that's a very important discernation when you're dealing with people. I've dealt with the public a lot in my life. As I said earlier, 23 years, I've had car batteries thrown at me and I smiled at their face as they walked out the door flipping me off. And I went about my day. And I think that speaks for volumes on my character. I'm highly adaptable. I love working with people. I love small groups, I love big groups, and I have no problem contributing to those groups. And I think that I actually add a level of cohesiveness when it comes to working with said people. Changes in policy, I don't, I hate to admit this, but I'm not sure what the current policy is. So if there's changes in it, I'll definitely look into them. But as far as decorum goes, I think that if you're sitting on this side, especially next to this gavel, this is cool. You need to have a little bit of reverence to yourself. And if people see you in public, I think that that's, it's important to almost kind of set yourself apart because you want to be approachable, you want them to come up and talk to you. And if you're hacking around in a stained shirt and they're not going to want to. Thank you.
Thank you. And since Rebecca called me out, I'll just get right to the point here. I had my list of the six qualities we'd have in a new city manager. And after the previous city manager failed on every single one of those, and I worked behind the scenes directly with the city manager and with other city commissioners to bring about a change, a change that was very sorely needed, a change that with 2020 hindsight is really, really, really obvious. It was only after that that you guys heard about it, that it made the newspaper. And that I was absolutely persistent, that we have somebody who can meet those qualities, meet the needs of the community to serve you guys the way you deserve to be served. And so if you look around, if you know where you're at, you're in the United States of America, the best country ever. And as long as there's a First Amendment, I think that we should appreciate that and we should use it. We have the freedom of speech, whether you're on this side of the podium or on the other side. And I think we're a great board. We let everybody speak. There's an open forum at the beginning of every meeting. So if you have anything that you want to say to the city commission, to city staff, you have that, we grant you that opportunity. You know, as I think about changes in policy, I would just want a policy that would bring about those needed changes sooner. And I want to tell you and maybe ask for forgiveness from some of you for the discomfort that some of you feel. But I guess I want to let you know that I'm up here to serve you and do those things that are uncomfortable for the people who aren't. So I look forward to serving you again for the next four years.
I, like Alan, grew up in a customer service industry. So I've had the same experiences that Alan's had in having to deal with disagreeable people and disagreeable and hard topics. I believe that with the commission, what I would add would, I'm willing to work and able to work with people that disagree with me. We're all in it for the same boat, or we're all in it for the same things, is to see Abilene succeed. We might have a little bit of a different way to get there. And we'll be able to mediate with each other and find a win-win solution in to what will be best for Abilene. I don't see any new ordinances or any new government policies needed to govern city commission's behavior.
I too have worked in the public sector my entire life. My mom used to always say, just kill them with kindness. And I still to this day use that a lot in my everyday. You have to treat everyone with respect. You have to listen. Being on the city commission, I'm hoping to give a voice to the people that don't feel like they're being heard. We've done a lot of team building things in some of the positions that I've held. And those help, just kind of get to know each other a little bit. As far as the policies go, I don't know that there needs to be any new policies put into place at this point. I think they're doing a pretty good job. Thank you.
All right, I have one more question and then will there be opportunity for closing? All right, you guys getting tired yet? This is actually my favorite question. I mean, that's a little, anyway, so I hope you like it, too. This one is about how you make decisions. When making decisions as an elected official, what values or beliefs do you operate from? In other words, what values, ideas, beliefs do you use to guide your decisions as an elected official? That's the first part of the question. And the second is, are there circumstances when you might act? Oh, are there circumstances when you might act against these values? So what values do you primarily use when you're making decisions? But under what circumstances might you say, well, I believe that, but I'm going to vote this way? And I believe Rebecca, you get to go first.
My turn? Okay. Okay, so I think the city commission is a part of your life. Obviously, it's not your entire life if you're a city commissioner. And I think you should bring the same values that you operate with in the rest of your life to city commission. My priority has always been honesty and clear communication. When I lived back east in New Jersey, people were like, I guess that's like a Kansas thing. You're so direct, right? I said, well, I think that's just kind of me, I'm a Taurus, right? I just kind of will tell you what I think. But I'm also eager to hear what you think. So communication, honesty, integrity, I think those are the hallmarks of any decision that you make. I've used those in my business, I've used those when I've been in office, I've used those in dealing with the public. And I think when you give that kind of respect to people, you get that kind of respect back. So those would be, those would be paramount for me. And I would hope to make every decision based on, and obviously there's a whole process that you go through when you make decisions. But at the end of that process, if you're not comfortable with it, if you can't present it honestly, if you can't talk about your decisions and your reasons honestly, if it doesn't feel right in your gut, it's not the right decision. So I think we should let our core principles of honesty and integrity guide us in everything and especially in the commission.
There is a long list of values that I put into just about every decision-making process that I make. First and foremost, probably family, community. There's, there's just a lot of different rationale. And it's hard to put a finger on the exact principles that I would use because all circumstances are different and all situations are different, too. You can't, there isn't a, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to throw a big G's word name, you know. But that's a course set of principles that I was raised on. And there's 10 pretty valuable rules that I apply in everyday life. And I think that those are paramount, thank you for the word, to the ability to cohabitate with your peers. And I think that that's an important thing. Again, sitting across from the table from somebody that you don't like is, you have to use a different set of values and principles in that instance as opposed to a person that you are sitting across the table from somebody that you truly do like. Circumstances I change, I would change if I'm proven wrong, you know. I think that I don't have the world's greatest perspective on all things. I would be much in tune to listen to, I would almost rather listen to somebody argue against me because it might change my mind. If I sit there and listen to somebody that's telling me exactly what I want to hear, I'll never learn a thing. Matter of fact, we'll both learn that we can jump off the same bridge together.
As far as how I make decisions, I'm, let's say, an information gatherer. So I try to read and learn as much as I can before I make a decision. I think a lot of those same things that I expect from our city manager are the values that I use as a guide. I don't know that I would act against those values. I think there's a lot of decisions that we make that really aren't values-based. I will say there's definitely, definitely circumstances, different things that I voted for because I know it was in the best interest of the community where maybe that wasn't my own, my own personal flavor. And so I can definitely, I think I can, I do a good job of seeing kind of really what the community needs, even when it conflicts with my own desires. I did want to say, this will consume your whole life. I did the math. We get paid $2,400 a year, $200 a month. That's about 2,000 hours, that's probably a low estimate, it's $1.20 an hour. So that's what you're signing up for. I did want to share that with you all. Thank you.
I kind of assumed it was a donation, too. So I wrote some. I wrote some things down on how I'd make some decisions. Start with overarching, faith first, family second, community, and then through a conservative lens, I would gather facts. I'd listen to all sides. I'd weigh evidence, apply common sense and you know, the, and based on those, you know, make your decision. What was the other question? Okay. Convincing arguments, that would be a circumstance where I might deviate from those if I'm on a panel full, full of four other people and they convince me otherwise, I'm open to other alternatives other than my own.
I think anybody that knows me knows that my family is pretty dang important to me. So that's first and foremost. You have to get informed, be informed, learn, research, know what's going on. Do the work, whatever it takes to, to get to the bottom of something. Honesty, accountability, flexibility, be a good listener, be compassionate. And realize that every single citizen of Abilene has a voice. Thank you.
Those are great answers, guys. I don't think that can be improved on really. I, I mean, I would, would agree totally with everything that's been said. I, I come back and just say, my, my faith in Christ is what informs me on how I'm going to work with people. And that comes over a, a period of a lot of years of learning what works, what doesn't work. Not being afraid to say, you know, I'm sorry, I, I made a mistake. Let's look at that again. My wife is the beneficiary and the, whatever the other side is, the, the downside of that. But learning to work together is, is a huge deal. So whether we apply that in our families or in a business, it's all the same thing. It, it really is. And, and the only time that we would change anything at all, that actually seems kind of weird to me because I, I wouldn't change. I mean, I'm, it's part of listening to what's going on. If I don't know the right answer, I need to be willing to, to change what my belief is about whatever it is that we're talking about. And that's just being humble, being realistic. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for answering all the questions, but I want to give you an opportunity now for, to make some sort of summative remarks, closing remarks. And you guys have answered them so quickly. So we'll, we'll get out of here. And Alan, you get to go first. I didn't forget you this time.
Thank you.
I would be happy to work with anybody up here on this podium, as well as the two incumbents that are currently sitting. I think that all of these are really great candidates and I think that you guys have a really hard decision in front of you. November 4th is the voting day and early voting is going on right now. So make sure to use your right as an American and you'll get that done. Thank you so much.
I just really want to thank all of you for being here and for, for taking the time to really be involved in this process. This is really important. As I look kind of out here, I see people who, who touch different kind of parts of the community. And I think it's, I think it's absolutely vital that we take everything that happens in this room seriously. And I will say that I've, I feel like I am of the sitting, sitting commissioners, the one who is willing to kind of sacrifice myself so that we could have, we could move the community forward so that we could get competent leadership. I'm looking at the gentleman from the airport out here who had $200,000 in their budget that, that was supposed to be used to rebuild hangars. It's mysteriously disappeared. And so it's, it's that sort of thing that we need to absolutely eliminate. We, we have, we have such opportunity. I see, I have, I see such a bright future for Abilene. And I'm just asking you to help me bring that to Abilene for the next four years. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for showing up and being a part of this. As far as the six of us up here now, I think you've got all good choices. I think Abilene is in a good position, very good position with any three combination of the six of us up here. I feel like we're in, in really good shape going forward. I'm up here just to make things competitive. I want to do my part to help the town and progress and work through the issues that we're having to make Abilene a great place going forward. And I want to do my part. And I thank everybody up here for stepping up and doing their part because this isn't easy for us to do. This is time-consuming work and we're here because we want the best for Abilene. So thank you all. I appreciate your time.
I too would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. And I agree with them. Any one of us up here, I think, is going to do their very best for the city of Abilene. We all love this town. We're going to make the right decisions. I think John Quinde has set a good starting point for us to move forward with. And I think all of us are willing to put the work in and do it. I would appreciate your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
As a, excuse me, as a dentist, I learned to work backwards. I wanted to look at the goal to see what do these people want for their mouth? What are they willing, what do they want to spend or what do they don't, what do they not want to spend in terms of getting their teeth fixed? Some people didn't have a lot of money, but they wanted, they wanted the crowns, they wanted it all. And, and they would find a way to pay for it. Other people had plenty of money and they didn't even care. So you got to learn to work with all of that and not, and not judge anybody. And that's, and that's a big deal. Something I hadn't talked about at all really is that one of the businesses that I was involved in while I was a dentist was working in the development of franchise hotels. And that's a nationwide thing. So when you go to bat, you're, you're, you're bringing your game and everybody else, every other city is bringing their game. And you're, you're in direct competition to see, okay, which city is going to give me the most and what can I do? So you find out how to, to work with developers. And that's the thing that, that I think that I have a unique setting with because I saw it from the other side. I saw it from what do I want to do as a developer to bring a hotel to a city? And then we had to work with developers in the, in reverse side. So if I was on the commission, I'd be working at it from the total other side. I know what they're looking for. I know what they want. And, and it's a big deal. We need businesses in town. We need to share this tax load. Because otherwise we're just going to stay stuck on 6,500 forever. Thank you, folks.
So I have to address John's comment first, that this job is going to pay us, what, a dollar twenty an hour? That's actually a pretty big step up for me because my very first job ever was when I was 14 years old and I went to work in the children's room in the library right downstairs. So from 75 cents to a dollar twenty in a few years, I'll, I'll take it, you know? I ran for city commission two years ago and I lost by 36 votes. And that was tough. And everybody said, you know, you've just been back a few years, wait, you'll, you'll try it again. And I was like, will I? I don't know. Do I really want to go through this again? But after staying with the process, you know, I serve on the, the library board now, being part of my community and, and watching the city commission, I thought, yeah, I have to do this. My family has been in Dickinson County for 167 years. Okay. Came down from Scotland to Canada to Dickinson County. I'm fifth generation. And when my mom passed away four years ago, I just really felt called to come back here and to do whatever I could to make the community strong and, and keep it strong. So as I've been through this process, I found that it's been everything I thought it would be and more. I've been standing on runways out at the airport. I've been climbing to stairs at the wastewater treatment authority. I've been talking with people across the city. I love doing the research. I love talking to people, finding out what's needed. And I love working with a team to solve problems. And I think this is, has a potential, everybody up here has the potential to be a great teammate. I think it's, it's going to be a revitalized city commission and I hope to be part of it. So thank you all for being here and for all you've done to, to make Abilene the great city it is.
Thank you all for coming out. Students, she would like to get a picture with us. She does not want us to leave.